Order. Can I have everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance? All right, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do, Mayor. We also want to acknowledge we do have a concurrent special meeting that's running with this meeting. We're going to be, we'll add the three items that are on consent calendar from the special to the regular consent calendar. So they'll become five point ten, five point eleven, and five point twelve. And then we'll be pulling item six point two from the regular meeting and rescheduling that for September eighteenth at five thirty P M.
Six point two?
Six point two, yeah. And then, sorry, we have lots of changes. Then we'll be pulling closed session item eight point seven. And then lastly, we'll be moving item six point one from the discussions on, discussions item on the regular meeting to right after the council's approval of the agenda. So we'll be doing that item first tonight.
All right. Can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Agenda passes. So we're gonna move right into the...
Into the appeal hearing.
You have to do it after citizens' comments?
Oh, we have to do it after citizens' comment?
It'd be during the...
Oh, okay.
All right, so we're gonna do citizens' comments first, and then we're gonna do the appeal hearing. So we're gonna do item number three, which is the section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will refer to staff for follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by five P M. on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Do we have anyone that would like to make a citizen's comment?
Scott Netherton, four two four College. I know in the past years, the public works have made a point of making sure the crosswalks are painted before school starts. Going back and forth there every day, it's, they're really bad. I don't know if that's gonna be scheduled to be done again this year or not, but I know a lot of people have commented on it and if there's something that can be done to get those painted, you know, or take a drive down there and see for yourself what you think. But I know that they're, they're pretty, looking pretty bad right now with schools starting up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a public comment? And just so you know, Mary, we do have the, the mobile microphone, which was added at the last meeting for those that can't or it'd be difficult for them to come to the, to lectern. So we appreciate that. Okay, seeing no other public comments, we're gonna close public comments. And we're gonna move to item number six point one, under ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Appeal hearing administration, administrative citation number one two eight zero four, alleged possession and use of illegal fireworks.
Thank you, Mayor. The chief's gonna basically present the case for the city, but I'm gonna give a brief introduction on how this appeal's gonna, gonna work. So first is gonna be my introduction and any questions that the council might have. And then the chief's gonna go into the presentation, and he'll have five minutes to do that. The appellant will have five minutes to present their response and anything they have to say or any evidence that they have. The city will then have three minutes for rebuttal. And then the appellant will have five minutes to do any closing remarks. And likewise, the city will have five minutes for their closing remarks. And then after that, the council will deliberate and make a decision on whether to grant the appeal and dismiss, to deny the appeal, which will be to uphold the citation or to modify it in some way. Does the council have any questions on the procedure?
No. Do you have a problem leading, leading us through this?
No, no problem.
Perfect. I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so chief or Justin?
Yeah, it's actually gonna be Battalion Chief, Fire Investigator, Justin Milligan.
And if the clerk can keep time, that would be great.
Good evening. Justin Milligan, Battalion Chief on C shift. Currently one of the arson investigators, prevention officer for the department. Today's case, this citation was written on Fourth of July, approximately twenty-three hundred hours, about eleven P M. I witnessed an individual on North Kalinga Street light an aerial firework from the driveway of the residence at four zero five College. That driveway exits out onto North Kalinga Street. I was driving south on North Kalinga when I saw the firework from the ground to an air, to the air. And I was able to approach pretty immediately from the distance I was at. As I drove to the location, several people were outside of the house. As I exited and contacted those individuals, I asked if anybody was going to take responsibility for the firework, and everybody denied. So I asked to speak with the property owner. A gentleman came out from the area, from the yard, did not identify himself, did not, would not agree that he was the property owner. However, those were the, he was the individual that those people brought out. As I explained to him the story that the house would get the citation for the fireworks if I couldn't, if nobody took responsibility for it. After that, there were several disgruntled people in the yard, so I decided not to stay any longer, left the area, and ended up writing the citation.
So I guess I just have one question. Did you see the person who lit the firework?
There was three individuals in the street right in front of the house that I saw in that area when the firework was lit. I could not identify them into the group, but I did witness them all walk up to the, I'm gonna call it a party in, in the yard at that residence.
And so you're, you're positive that you seen the person go back into that residence?
Yes.
That lit the firework. You witnessed that?
Yes.
Okay.
What was...
That's not my question.
Sorry. I wasn't informed that if anybody, that the property owner would receive the citation as when you approached.
Yes, in the discussion with the group of individuals up in the front.
Okay.
That was when nobody took... Wasn't, nobody volunteered to say that they did it, that, that's when that...
And, and the owner recognized that he would be cited?
That I am not sure, because I am not sure the individual that came out did not say that he was the property owner. He refused to answer that.
Okay.
And that is our current policy?
That is our current policy, yes. So the current policy of his witness from the property, the property owner or the responsible party for that, party would be getting the citation.
One more. From the, the group, you did acknowledge to them that if nobody came, you know, through, that the property owner would get cited, and it was known to them that they would, there would be a citation, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? No? I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Is Mr. Bernal here? Would you like to speak? Yeah, you can come up to the microphone here. Again, you'll have five minutes. The five minutes won't include any questions from council if you're willing to take them.
Okay. Good evening. And, yeah, I'm here because of a ticket. Yes, he says that I didn't identify myself. I did tell him that I was the owner of the home. I did not know who lit the firework at the moment. And there was a lot of people in my area because there was a block party on the college street that night, and it did end at eleven o'clock. So there was a lot of people up and down that area. A lot of cars were parked at my house, but not people that I knew. It was a lot of people due to the block party because everything, the main street was blocked off. And, yeah, that's mainly, most of it, I was cooking, so I did not know who lit it or who was... Once I found out he was there, people called me over, so I went to go see what was going on, and, yeah, that was about most of it.
Any questions from council?
Did anybody at your, that was in your residence acknowledge that there was something around there or fireworks were around or anybody like that? Did you ask them if, you know, hey, I'm gonna get a ticket if nobody comes forward?
Oh, there was people there that heard, but I did not know who lit it. I didn't even know anybody had fireworks, 'cause I personally didn't even have fireworks at my home. So, yeah, if someone did do it, they did it without my permission, and honestly, there was people everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I guess, I only have like one question. So our fire department states that, that when, when they pulled up, that they seen people that were lighting it go into your residence.
That, I did not see if they were inside or outside. I did see that there was people on the sidewalk.
I know, but it was, it was, it was just told that people ran inside of your residence that were lighting the fireworks.
Well, at the moment, I did not see who ran in, 'cause I was inside at the moment grabbing something when I heard him. I did hear the fireworks, and when I walked out, I seen that they were playing in the air, but I did not know who did it.
So when people, did you know, did you have people over at your house that ran into your house?
That ran into my house? I did not see who ran into my house. There was people that were at the block party that I knew, that they were, that I was letting them use my restroom, 'cause they only had porta potties, and there was some family that I knew. But I personally did not invite a lot of people over. But, yeah, the, at the time of everything, everybody was walking, going home to their cars, 'cause it was eleven o'clock, and I, eleven o'clock is when that block party ended.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Were you in the backyard when the fire department showed up, or were you inside the house?
I was actually cooking. I did not know when he showed up.
Were you cooking inside or outside?
Outside.
Okay. Are you kind of conflicting a little bit? Okay, so you were outside cooking then?
I was outside, but at the moment that I seen the firework, I was inside.
Okay.
I heard it, actually. At the moment, there was a lot of people in the area that were lighting up fireworks.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
Okay. Battalion Chief, do you have any, any other comments? Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, not really.
Okay. Any closing remarks? Battalion Chief.
I didn't bring the file, the complete file on this, but I did wanna just finish up with, yes. After the incident at the residence on the Fourth of July, the next business day on Monday following is when I sent out letters, and I did attach copies of the city ordinances to the letters identifying what, how the ordinance reads, that the property owner is responsible for all the people at the, at the residence. So that was delivered to him, certified mail, so he is aware of the city ordinance and how it, how it reads. So I just wanted to add that.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Was that, was, was the address in question? Was that the address that was on the permit for the block party?
No, it was not. It was not, it was not the block party... The submittal for the block party was not at four oh five.
Okay.
Good. Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Bernal, do you have anything, anything else? Come on, go ahead and come on up.
I just wanted to state that my house was part of the block party, and I have a picture of the flyer that they gave me, my neighbors did. I don't know if you guys would like to see that.
Sure.
Yeah, you can submit, you can give it to the clerk right here. I'll pass it down. Yeah, why don't you just come up, if it's just on your cell phone, why don't you just come up and you can show it to the council? You can just start with the mayor, you can go that way. Any other remarks?
No, that was about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so counsel at this time, it's now up to the city council to determine whether to grant the appeal, which would be to nullify the citation, to deny the appeal, which would be to uphold the citation or to modify it in some way. And you can just do that by motion. You could have discussion, however the mayor prefers.
Can you repeat that, please?
So the council, by motion one way or another, at this time, can either grant the appeal, which would mean you agree with Mr. Bernal, and it would nullify the citation, he wouldn't have to pay the fine. You can deny the appeal, which would uphold the citation, or you could modify it in some way.
What does council want to, anyone have any suggestions or anyone have any discussion?
Just a hearing of both parties. Since it was a block, block party, I mean, I just, I, I myself, speak for myself, I would like to modify it in some way. Modify is bring it down or something like that. Could we do that?
Yeah, if you'd like to modify it, you can exceed the amount of the fine, the current fine. Battalion Chief, is it a thousand? So you couldn't exceed a thousand, but you could modify it under something, under a thousand.
I just see it as, you know, I mean, you know, I, we hear your case, Mr. Bernal, and, and, you know, I know there was a block party, you know, but I, I just think in, you know, in fifty-fifty, I think, you know, you know, fire, fire, I'm saying was, I saw somebody going in your house, you had no, nowhere to know who, who did, but somebody did go on your property, and I just think the best thing to do is, the honest thing to do is modify it. I mean, you know, since you weren't aware of it, but somebody that was on your, around your property, and there was a block party, I think modifying would be the, just a fair, fair case of in, at this moment, in, in my opinion.
So I guess I'd just like to add a little bit to discussion. We can open this up for discussion. And so I did ask the city staff that I do have somewhat of an issue with how, that the, that our policy is written on this, because I do have questions of that exact nature. If somebody's outside your property, you don't always control who's outside your house. You don't. So that's one thing for me, and I, I don't like the way that it's written like that. I don't like the fact that, hey, somebody could be literally like, come up, you could be inside your house doing whatever you're doing, someone comes up, they have a group of friends, they light fireworks, and then what do they do? They bounce, right? And then they, then the property owner's the one that gets in trouble. However, that being said, I don't think that's this case, because I hear that we have a witness that's seen people running into the house. So to me, I think like, you know, we, we have our officers. We need to trust in their, in their, you know, their opinions and what they're saying and it as being factual, and we give them the benefit of the doubt. And so I just think that, that, that citizens have asked specifically this year for the city to step up and to start enforcing, you know, heavily enforce the, the rules around fireworks because of how dangerous they can be, and we see how dangerous they were. We had fires all over town. And so, you know, I'll just leave it at that. But if anyone else have anything to add to this, you know, that's what I think about it. I don't like the way that, that the, the policy sits, because I could see where a situation could happen, where someone could go and set off fireworks and then leave a residence, and then if it's from a drone and somebody sees it at that house, but yet that person bounced, then should the resident be the one getting the fine? I don't, I don't know about that, but I don't think that was the situation, 'cause we have a witness that said they seen them run into the house. So I think that's a different scenario. And I think that, you know, that we need to make sure that we, if somebody is, we need to make sure that people follow these rules. This could burn down someone's house, so...
How many fires did we have that night?
We had four.
Residential or commercial?
No, they were all vegetation.
Okay. I agree with Mayor Vosburgh on this. There's, there's a little bit of evidence, but there was a witness that actually seen the people going back to the house. I think there should still be a fine, but not sure what yet, because there was witness. There was a little bit of agitation as well. And if they're, if, if they weren't guilty, they wouldn't be agitated. So it's kind of questionable.
Yeah, if we're following our policies and we're supposed to back them up as well as our, our police and fires, so it's something that we just, we have to do in order to slow it down. And, you know, the community has to get involved in slowing it down. If it's happening in front of your house or in your driveway, and it's your house, you're gonna have to stop it.
With having four fires and us needing to back our enforcement, I make a motion to deny and continue with a thousand dollar fine.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Nay, just to modify.
Mayor Vosburgh?
I also vote aye.
So this time the appeal is denied?
Correct. Yep. All right. We are going to continue on with the agenda to item number two point one, presentation of the city water supply feasibility study. I don't wanna hatchet the, the name.
Seven.
Seven, Onsoi, G E I consultants. Did I say that correctly? Sorry about that. I hope I said that correctly.
And I'll introduce him. So tonight, we're just requesting the council receive and file the city of Kalinga Water Supply Feasibility Study. And if there's any direction or comments the council may have. This was basically in response to the city's long-term water reliability challenges. This kind of stemmed from the, the issues we had with water about three years ago when we had, when we were under public health and safety allocation. As the state granted funds to pay for the water that we had to buy on the open market, they also hired G E I consultants to assist the city in a kind of a sustainable feasibility study related to sustainability water supply for the, for the city. related to, um, sustainability water supply for the, for the city. And so we've been working with G E I for probably two years, I think, seven, on this. Looking at ways to determine ways of having, obtaining water supply in those years that we couldn't get water. Um, and so we've been exploring ideas, working with farmers, working with different irrigation districts in the area, and with Westlands and other folks to find alternatives to that long-term sustainability. So Seven and the team from G E I will kind of go through the report, and, uh, through a PowerPoint presentation, kind of give you a high-level overview of the report. So you kind of understand where we started, kind of where we're at, and some of the conclusions that came in, um, from the, uh, the report. So with that.
Thank you so much for the introduction, Sean. We couldn't figure this out, would you please help, help to advance this slide?
Just on the right side, right?
I see, okay, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, uh, my name is Seven Monsoi, I am a senior water resource planner with G I Consultants. I have been practicing, uh, twenty years, uh, in this field. Um, I also have expertise in groundwater modeling, as I received my PhD from U C Davis, fo- focusing on the subsurface modeling. Uh, we are here today, as Sean mentioned, to give a brief presentation about the feasibility study, and really give a high-level overview of the findings and some of the recommendations for future considerations. And I have my colleague Fatima with me today.
Hi, everyone, my name is Fatima Segoviano, I am a water resource professional at G I Consultants. I've, uh, been involved in a lot of flood and water resource projects, um, especially preparing feasibility studies. So as Seven mentioned, I was part of the team to help develop this study for the city.
Before we start, um, I just want to say that we are excited to be here, and we really like to, to thank you for this opportunity. Uh, this is a brief presentation, um, so we just brought a copy of the report. This has got a lot of technical details for anyone who's interested in knowing more about this feasibility study. We will, uh, start with the project goals and objectives, uh, we will give a brief project overview. Uh, we will go over the alternatives and the approach we use for evaluations, evaluation of each of the alternatives. And we will wrap up our presentations with some of the, uh, findings from this study, as well as, uh, some key considerations for, uh, for future planning and implementation. The main goal of this study is to really formulate and evaluate a set of alternatives that will provide both short-term and long-term water supply sources that's sustainable and resilient for the city of Colinga. And this goal really centers around four of the key, uh, objectives. Uh, water supply sus- uh, reliability, uh, cost effectiveness, a stakeholder engagement and, uh, support, uh, in this process, as well as the regulatory compliance during the implementation stage. As Sean mentioned, uh, this feasibility study responds to the recent drought that we all experienced within California, and the resulting significant reductions in the Central Valley, uh, project surface water allocations that directly impacted the city. The main challenge for the city is the sole dependence on the C V P allocations, and not having any other water supply sources during drought, uh, to meet the demand. As a solution, uh, we conducted this feasibility study to identify and evaluate, uh, a set of alternatives that will provide long-term solutions for the city's considerations for future studies. And we followed through, uh, a process that included six steps. We started with the formation of the team that will contribute to, to this, uh, study. Um, and that ended with the, the completion of this final report, as I, uh, mentioned earlier. Here, I'd like to turn it over to Fatima, who will provide project overview and details on the evaluations.
Yep, so, um, you know, as, uh, to begin with, really our team focused on providing a comprehensive analysis of the different, uh, data and information that we received. Um, we did really begin with the city's, you know, water portfolio, um, and then did a detailed analysis of their demands and supplies. We also, um, evaluated the future water supply and demand assessment, taking into account the climate change impacts, and then also the future, you know, uh, C V P year allocations based on the calcium three modeling. So once we have that, um, the next step in, in the study is to formulate alternatives. And through this process, we developed five alternatives. Alternative one being water banking, um, under this we have, you know, five options. Um, the first two being local banking, and then also, and, and parallel to that, either banking through exchange, um, agreements, uh, due to, you know, groundwater quality. Um, so that would be with Westlands and Gladstone. Alternatives one C to one E are regional options for banking with established, um, programs. So that would be with Semitropic, Rosedale, or Willow Springs. Alternative two is, um, the city developing a local groundwater pumping system as a supplemental source, and alternative three is, uh, producing disaffected tertiary-treated, uh, recycled water um, in the existing wastewater treatment plant and in compliance with Title twenty-two regulations. So here we just want to provide some geographic context on some of these alternatives. Um, we have the Westlands Water District right next to Colinga, and then as we move south, we have Semitropic, uh, Rosedale, and then Willow Springs at the southern end. The map on the side shows the Gladstone Parcels that are within the city. And, you know, once we have, um, the set of alternatives, in order to evaluate them, we had to develop, um, criteria that would make evaluation, you know, very transparent and clear. So very quickly, we looked at technical feasibility, so water supply reliability and the construction feasibility, any economic or financial or funding options for the alternatives, um, making sure the alternatives are, what's their regulatory compliance, any impacts to the environment, um, the operations and maintenance of those alternatives when implemented, the stakeholder and public acceptance of the alternatives, and then implementation feasibility. Um, technical and implementation feasibility, um, we also have sub-criteria, as shown. And we also just want to make note that this is a very, you know, high-level qualitative assessment, um, in order to, you know, compare the alternatives, um, with each other. So really, you know, how are we able to, you know, compare these alternatives? It's where we have a scoring system in place, where we give each alternative a score of one, two, three, um, for each of the criteria, a score of one indicating, um, less performing or less favorable alternative, while, uh, the score of three, it's where it becomes more favorable for that given criteria. So, you know, once we have this groundwork in place, we're able to move forward, you know, with our recommendations, and I'll hand it over to Seven.
Thank you, Fatima. So as we have gone through this comprehensive analysis of the city's water demand and supply, both for the current, um, conditions, historical as well as the future conditions, it really comes down to three, uh, top-ranked, uh, categories. Um, for the top-ranked alternatives, we identify Westlands and Gladstone as the most viable and feasible options for future considerations. And they score the highest. For the mid-tier alternatives, we have the regional water banking, uh, partners, Semitropic, Rosedale, and Willow Springs. And for the lower-ranked alternatives, uh, they receive the lowest ranking that included local groundwater pumping by the city and, uh, the produced recycle water, uh, by the city. Once we identified the top-ranked alternatives, we really took the next step and say, okay, with these potential local banking and exchange programs, can we look at the future conditions, uh, for demand and water supply conditions, and incorporate the climate change and see what that looks like, and what kind of information we can gain from this exercise? We did this analysis over the twenty-one-year planning horizon, starting from two thousand twenty-five through two thousand forty-five. Uh, we did the analysis on an annual basis, as Fatima mentioned, we took into account climate assessment, uh, we used information from the calcientry simulations to take into account what the future allocations will look like from the C V P project. And we incorporated all of these analysis to get an assessment of, again, what, how the demand and supply conditions will look like. And we looked at our, our analysis at every five years to, to really inform us, uh, about the demand and supply conditions. As we look at this chart, as we move into the future, we are seeing the annual demand to go up. With respect to surplus plus, uh, it's actually going in the opposite direction, and it will continue to decline as we move forward. We also looked at the annual deficit, meaning, um, any water supply, uh, water demand that's not being met by the supply that's available. We did this analysis on an annual basis, we looked at the maximum deficit. As we would anticipate, uh, we would, uh, experience a maximum deficit as we move into the future, into twenty-four to twenty-five, uh, twenty-four to five conditions. We also looked at the demand and supply comparisons to see, um, uh, how they compare, and, and what are the surpluses and deficits would look like for the same horizon. As we can see on this, uh, last chart, uh, in the earlier years, we are seeing some surpluses, but when we reach twenty-four to twenty-five conditions, that actually turns into a deficit, meaning the city will not be able to meet the demand that's required. So what does this all mean? Again, in the early years, we are seeing some reliable options, using the surpluses for, uh, putting into local water banking or, uh, exchange programs that will meet the needs of the city. When we move into the next ten years, we are still seeing enough surpluses that will, uh, meet the needs, but we are beginning to see some severe and frequent drought conditions that will, uh, uh, result in deficits. Uh, by the time twenty thirty-five, twenty forty, banking still, uh, appears to be a viable option, but since we are experiencing, uh, greater deficits, now we are anticipating the city actually to consider other, uh, management actions to be able to meet the demand. And by the time twenty forty, twenty forty-five, banking alone is not going to be enough. So that means city would need to consider other actions to be able to meet the demand. Once we concluded our work, uh, we also took the next step and put together a, a set of considerations, uh, for cities, uh, future planning and implementation of this feasibility study, that included details about partnership agreements, uh, the needs for the operational and infrastructure, uh, considerations, any legal and regulatory compliance issues that need to be taken, uh, into considerations, and equal sharing opportunities, uh, between partners. We also anticipate the city to come up with adaptive management strategies, and also have some performance tracking, how the banking options would actually perform into the future. And most importantly, what are the funding opportunities for cities' considerations? So that the city can seek funding to support this effort to reduce the financial impact, uh, on the cities. So this concludes our, um, presentations. Before I take any questions, I do want to acknowledge that this is a great collaboration between the city, D W R, and the consultants, including Dan Bergman, who's here today. Uh, within the G I team, uh, we have Satya Gala, who was the D W R contract manager. Uh, he played a key role securing this funding from D W R to support the study, study. I was the project manager, Fatima did the heavy lifting for the technical analysis, report preparation. We also had Michael Condon as our technical advisor. Thank you for your time and attention, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
I've got a question. So this was a state-funded look into the future of water usage, correct?
Yes.
So s- I'm sure we're the same as every other community in California, so it looks like in another twenty-plus years, we're all gonna be out of water. What, uh, what is the state doing to remedy that? Is there new dams being built to help store water, um, off all our rivers in California? Do we have anything looking, looking into the future? It looks like we're gonna need more water storage, are we planning on building dams? Because I keep seeing them get tore down, not built. So how does the state start to manage water instead of letting it all go back out to the ocean?
That's a million-dollar question, that's a great question. I think what I can say that the trends that we are seeing with respect to where the state is focusing on, and, and where they are putting their effort and energy is the groundwater banking. Um, I'm not saying, because we are talking about groundwater banking here, but the groundwater is really the greatest reservoir that we have in the earth. And I think we did not use the capacity as much as we did, especially with the sigma efforts, the groundwater conditions, groundwater sustainability is better managed, and we are seeing a lot of efforts at the local and regional, uh, entities to, um, really establish groundwater banking programs. It's either in the form of local banking, physical banking, it can be direct recharge, in-law recharge, conjunctive use, or exchange programs. So state and the federal entities are providing a lot of funding opportunities to, to give support to entities to implement these projects.
And so the groundwater banking's all coming from the, the, uh, canal, right?
I'm sorry?
All the water banking is coming from the water coming down the canal, and most of the coming, most of the water coming down the canal is coming from, uh, Shasta, which, there's a dam. Where are the rest of the dams? If we're gonna need to start storing water, we have to recharge our groundwater by storing rainwater, not pumping it from one lake that doesn't have enough for us and everywhere else goes. So we, you're, you're correct, the water banking is good, but you gotta have the recharge from the, from the dams to stop it from running out to the ocean.
Yes. One comment I can make on that one, that's a great point, um, another concept is one water. Uh, the state is also taking an initiation at the watershed scale. Instead of looking at groundwater as one resource and surface water another, they are actually, uh, aggregating into one source and looking at all of the sources, all of the moving part, uh, parts, uh, as a whole. Um, I believe D W R is launching five different watershed, uh, studies across the state as a pilot studies, and I believe their intention to actually implement these pilot studies across the state, again, give the impression and the sense to everyone that we do need to manage the water sources as a whole, not groundwater as, as, as one piece and surface water as another, because they complement each, each other. If one is not working, we know that the other is not going to function well. I'm not sure if I'm answering your questions.
It was the answer I figured I'd get.
So I got a, I got a question. Our average rainfall per year is two hundred million acre feet. We have storage for just under thirty-five million acre feet. Why isn't that extra water that's being dropped? How is that not going into the ground? Or being stored somewhere else? Because I know they tore out four dams in the last few years, and just got approval to build one, which nobody's got off their butts to do that yet. That should have been high priority.
Why is the, I'm sorry, why is the extra water is not going into?
Yeah, the other hundred and sixty-five million acre feet, where's that water going? We're only able to store thirty-five, thirty-five million acre feet.
Talking about at the state level?
State and federal.
Okay.
Altogether, what, what are they doing with the other hundred and thirty-five million acre feet? They're saying we're not getting enough water, but we're getting plenty of water. Their, their, their records are showing we're getting that water. Why haven't they figured out a way to store that, or at least let it go back into the ground? Or give it to the farmers? So that's what I would suggest, get that extra and just give it to the farmers at a, at a discount, just so it's not wasted.
I, I, if I can add one comment on that one, um, when we look at it at the state level, they also have When we look at it at the state level, they also have to keep into account environmental concerns and the water that's needed to store the environment, like fisheries and biologies. And I think there is always a constant debate about how much water that's needed to continue to support environment as opposed to the water that needs to be released and used, whether it's for storing, making it available for farmers, or most importantly, really providing water to municipalities. So that's a constant, I think, fight over water. I think that will continue over the years.
So I just want to make a comment. I appreciate you working with the city and the state and our, you know, Dan and everyone to, you know, to do this as probably were required by some state agency. I just want to make the comment, though, that I, along with my colleagues, we all here know that we have more than enough water and that the reason we're in this boat is because the state's mismanagement of the water. San Francisco has been allowed to pollute the delta, and there's been multiple court cases about this. And so about ten years ago, when I was here, we had someone from the DWR come, and they stated that we were using seventy-five percent of our clean water in order to create a barrier at the delta.
Yes.
So whether it be for the fact that San Francisco refuses to control their pollution or whether it be that it's going after a delta smelt fish, these sanctions have been imposed on the water. And then when you throw into the solution that once they impose those sanctions, that farmers did the only thing they could, which was go to the ground to get that water, when they started pulling that water out of the ground, what we've seen was we've seen the areas around those areas start to sink, which is why we have this whole sigma thing. It's not a benefit to the municipality, it's a benefit to the state to put the water back in. And so basically, we're being asked to pay to put that water back in. I just want to point out that we used to have more water right here in the Central Valley than anywhere in the entire country. This used to be Tulare Lake. And the reason it's not is because the government had the great idea that we were going to dam everything up so that they could control it, and that's what they've done. And that's why we're in this situation, lack of management. And back in two thousand and fourteen, we had a water bond, seven point five billion. I'm sure that most of us can agree they haven't spent this money correctly, because as we've stated, they've done, what do they do? They tear down dams rather than create storage. So I know that this is not your battle. I know that you're here to help us go through this and trying to figure it out, but for anyone listening remotely, I wouldn't want someone to get the idea that we're running out of water when anyone can go and watch the outflows. Anyone can go to the DWR's website and you can watch those outflows going right to the ocean. Our water is pouring right out like a sieve, and they barely turn those pumps on at all. In fact, it takes a president to jump in and tell them to move those pumps. So as I very much respect your information coming forward and helping us to weigh through this catastrophe that we've been put in by Sacramento and the environmentalists, I just want to point out to the public that this has been done to us. This isn't something that we did. And the reason, I guess my question for you is, is that you show that demand is going to go up. Specifically, is that for Colinga? Because I think our water usage has actually been going down, because a lot of people have been switching. So the demand going up and then the surplus, I understand why the surplus is going to go down. They're going to continue to pump it to the ocean. They're going to continue, and they want us all to pump it back underground, so that's the surplus area. But the demand, why do you think our demand is going to go up?
With respect to the demand, we consider the demand projections that was from the two thousand twenty urban water management plan that was developed by the city of Colinga. Obviously, now here we are, it's two thousand twenty-five, but at the time of the study, that was the best available information.
Yeah.
I think there is some indication that that's outdated, but I think it kind of gives us a more conservative perspective, because I think we are overestimating the demand. That means we are basically underestimating the surplus and we are on the overestimation on the deficit. I guess looking at the more conservative perspective. So that's one of the reasons, I think, this is a high level that used the best available information at the time of the study, but there are so many steps moving forward to improve it, you know, make some refinements to get a better understanding of what the surpluses and deficit situations would look like.
And then I guess, I don't know if you have the answer to this question, but this probably should be on people's mind, when we're moving water and we're paying for it to bank it rather than to use it, that's water that we're not going to be receiving in our water fund. And you know that when we're forced to save, whether it be to a water bank system or because the government comes in and says we need to, we still have to pay for that water to move down the delta. We still have to pay Westlands, but yet we have a very small amount of water connections. What is it, three thousand? About four thousand, right? So we don't have, we don't have, you know, our staff capacity is, you know, probably less than it should be, but we don't have the ability like bigger cities where the, hey, we're conserving a little bit and this isn't going to make a big difference. Every time that we conserve, it makes a huge difference on the bills of the people that live here. And so, you know, I don't know, like, is that built into your study anywhere to understand the financial impacts of the people locally that are going to have to pay those fees for these bankings? Because, I mean, banking water lets us use it in the future, but it doesn't stop us from having to pay for it.
We consider the financial impacts qualitatively. As Fatima mentioned, the entire analysis that we perform is on a high-level qualitative assessment that's factored into the analysis, but we didn't, we did not do the data crunching and we did not do quantified assessment, as we did not have the specific informations. As we can tell, this is in the very initial stages for the recommendations of potential partnership and potential options for considerations.
And I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And I do appreciate the comments.
Yeah.
As we took this study on, we are really not making assumptions or dictating how the state or the reclamation moves forward or how they handled it in the past. We are really working with the science, working with the data, how the conditions were historically, where we are currently, and then looking into the future. We are really bringing in the best information that's available so that you can take a look and make informed decisions.
And we thank you for that. I appreciate that and I appreciate, even though we have harsh comments on the things that are happening at the state, which many of us disagree with, we know that that's not you and your crew and you guys are trying to weave us through that pathway, and so I appreciate that.
We are here to help.
Exactly.
We understand, we understand, because at the end of the day, you had to leave with this reality, and if the reclamation continues on this path, it's not going to get any easier.
Right.
So what options could we create, working together, so that the city has some really options to meet the demand that's required? I think the demand will increase. It's not going to, most likely it's not going to increase as it was projected five years ago, but we are still anticipating that demand increase. And we are experiencing really crazy climate conditions, so it's not going to get any easier. So what can we do together to improve it?
You know, for the young generation, I know you have your assistant right here. Thirty years ago, my dad was in Sacramento with a sign, fighting for water, and here I am, when we go to Sacramento, doing the same thing. My dad was twenty-eight years old, I'm forty-nine years old, and I'm doing the same thing, the same numbers, like a broken record from back in the day. And it's, you know, we hear that climate thing again, and we see things like this that, you know, these are our creeks, you know, every two, three years. And that run water from these hills, you know, we have about three or four creeks that combine together. At what point do the people up there decide where to catch that water? I mean, is there plans to try to see this side to catch water? Because, you know, it does run a lot. I mean, it will run for two, three months sometimes when we get the rains, and this is, this is in twenty-three. And every year, I take a picture or video of that running, of our creeks running, and, you know, they run enough where the water clears, gets clear. But like I said, my dad, my father worked in Vasto Valley for fifty-three years. And same thing, every year he was out there in Sacramento trying to fight for water. And the same thing was always given to him because of climate, the climate, the climate. And I see the graph there, twenty, forty. I mean, do you guys think consideration of the rain, I mean, the rain that's going to come down in those years, on how to catch it, what to do for it, what to do with it? Or, you know, instead of saying, okay, our valley is going to go down, but our expense is going to go high? You know, I just want to, you know, like I said, for the younger generations, because, you know, like I mentioned, you're fighting for more water now. And my dad and my father was thirty years ago, about twenty years ago, fighting for the same thing and hearing the same thing. So is there a way where we could stop saying the same thing? Because I know us in the West Valley, we do have a lot of streams that do run a lot of water, and, you know, I think people want to know what happens to that water that the creek runs, what happens to it, what's the answer for it, or where does it go, or how does it get managed, or how can we use that source for our communities around the west of the valley? But thank you so much for coming.
Of course. I can actually add a comment on that one in terms of how do we not lose water during storm events, right? Because it's lost in the system, it's gone, and you can never capture it. There is concept about floodmark. Basically, what it does, what it proposes during flood events, you operate your system differently so that you capture that water, whether to store it or put it on the ground. And typically, it's practice on agricultural lands that's dormant, and you literally flood the surface and then let the water seep into groundwater. Then that's one way to store it. Sometimes if you are able to have a storage place, that's another way to store it, physically store it, but it's basically putting that water to good use, whether to store it or to store groundwater, so that when the drought comes, then your creek is dry, there's nothing is happening, and then you back to your groundwater to pump what you need or take it out of the storage. So there are a lot of entities actually leading that direction. We have done recent studies exactly kind of following this process, understanding their system and kind of informing them what changes they can make in their operations. If they continue to operate the way in old days, that water is going to be lost in the system. So we look at their system, we examine it, we kind of find issues where they are, and we go back and report them and come up with a list of recommendations for them to really put that every drop of water into good use so that they can use it during drought.
Is there a recommendation where they would have communities build their own basins so they could store water? So like us, we have a little aqueduct, but where they're...
That's actually the almost the easiest way to store it on agglance, if you can store it. The challenge with the Colinga is the water quality concerns, unfortunately. The TDS is elevated, the cost of treatment is very high, so I think the best viable option is the exchange program. That's why we identify this water, local water banking, as a banking opportunity, but perhaps the exchange program is a better choice for the city of Colinga.
Thank you.
So I've got another quick question. You said twenty-twenty was the, is that the last survey that you guys did? The study survey on the water?
Twenty...
Twenty-twenty?
No, it's just data based on the urban water management plan.
It was, it was a survey study of what the water was. Have you guys done a more recent survey study on where water stands right now in the state of California?
For the city of California Water Survey?
All of it. Has it gone up or down?
I'm sorry.
Because twenty-twenty with the water usage is going to be a little bit different, because that's when COVID was going on and everybody was at home.
With respect to city of Colinga?
No, just the whole state, the whole state in general.
Yes, so let me explain a little bit. The urban water suppliers are supposed to develop urban water management plans every five years. The last one was completed in two thousand twenty. That's a compliance, it's a requirement by DWR. City of Colinga prepared it. So now all agencies are actually going through the twenty-twenty-five cycle. So by July first, two thousand twenty-six, we will know better at the state level what is the total urban demand and also future projections moving into the future.
Okay.
So that was last done, yes, in two thousand twenty.
Okay.
Some entities look at their conditions, they prepare water supply master plans, they kind of want to understand where they are going, but most agencies, they kind of do every five-year cycle and they wait for the next one.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from people in the audience? Yeah, feel free.
It seemed like the same thing year after year. We're told to manage, plan ahead, plan ahead, plan ahead. The state doesn't do jack the plan ahead. If we're expected to plan in ten, fifteen, twenty years how much water we're going to need, why aren't they doing the same thing to store that water? Why aren't they planning on having that percentage of water captured and held so that we're not expected? It's just a way of controlling the people to where you're allowed to have what we tell you you can have. And it's just frustrating. We need to, you know, figure out a way to be self-sufficient, whatever, you know, I'm not saying it's cheap, I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow, but I know their lowest recommendation was to plan ahead, drill, do whatever. But again, that's just so we don't become self-reliant on ourselves. And I think down the road, we need to look that way, because the way it's going, we're the only ones being held responsible, not the state.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I very much appreciate you guys coming and giving us this information, and I'm sure staff will be following up with you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks again for your time.
All right, we're going to move on to item number two-point-two, our favorite. City of Colinga, natural gas update, Dan Bergman, IGS.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. First, I just want to acknowledge Sabem and Fatima. You may not have seen the written report yet, but it is amazing. The amount of detail in that report is far beyond what I have done in my own work, so really, really good work. Appreciate that. And thank you for allowing me to needle you through those months with all my questions and challenges. Okay. So now we're going to talk about natural gas and the annual update. So it's been two years now since City Council, you approved a gas purchase policy, and we came back last year and amended it. And maybe it needs to be amended again, but the main thing is that we have a purchase policy that causes your staff and me representing staff to be accountable to you, because the natural gas enterprise is so important and there's so much volatility in the gas market. So this is what I went through last year, and here we go again. Look at the status of wholesale purchases, have we complied with the policy, any recommended changes, financial status of the enterprise, and the needed changes in the rates. That's what the gas purchase policy says needs to be done annually, and this is our second time doing it. It was a year ago in July that NRG took over from Shell trading. Shell had been serving the city for twenty years, and they did a great job. In my opinion, NRG is doing a better job. They have been amazing. One of the things that we retained when we switched service from Shell to NRG is them giving the city a credit for your redwood path transportation capacity that you pay PG&E for if you use it or if you don't. And you use it in the winter time, but you don't need it in the summer. So in the past year, the credit to the city's been a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is consistent with what Shell was doing, if even a little bit better. So that is a great benefit. They don't have, they don't have to do that. If they didn't do that, we would be stopped. If they didn't do that, we would be stuck. But that excess value has um, it, the excess capacity has value to them in the summertime. And they give the city, um, they share the benefit of that value with the city. This is looking back at our supply portfolio for last winter. You can see the winter peak and that the gas we bought in August of twenty-four, a year ago, we bought it at five fifty-three. And that hedged us for the winter time, so you were protected from wintertime volatility. You can see that the 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 green is the gas that was purchased a month ahead. Actually, the blue, I'm sorry, that was three thirty. And then the day price gas was three eighteen, and that's averaged over the year. So prices stayed low, there was no winter spikes last winter, which is a good thing. And we did well. So this is looking forward now. As we made a purchase in August of twenty-four, we just made a purchase in August of twenty-five. Your gas purchase policy authorizes the city manager to do that. Where we bought the gas at five fifty-three in twenty-four, the fixed price gas for this coming winter is lower at five twelve. And we are hedged at eighty-two percent for this coming winter. So in that sense, we are, um, we've complied with the gas purchase policy cuz the purchase policy says we're gonna buy eighty percent of our gas before November first. So we're good there. This is that look back and look ahead again. The thing that caused the market to go crazy was the winter of twenty-two, twenty-three, when monthly gas peaked at thirty-nine dollars a decatherm. We dodged that by got buying gas ahead. But it was out of that that I really pushed for the gas purchase policy. Not that I had to push very hard because it's a good tool, it causes accountability. But you can look now at, looking to the right, I'm showing historical prices. And you can see in January of twenty-five, the market was about five dollars. So we paid five fifty-three for the gas, the actual market peaked at about five dollars. So it was a little bit lower than the fixed price gas that we bought. But the main thing to look at here is the next two winters. You can see in January twenty-six, we're peaking at just above five dollars, and that's the gas we just bought at five twelve. But notice for the next winter, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're back up at higher prices. And that's the hangover from that crazy winter where prices went so high. Basically, where buyers want to buy gas out into the future, sellers are still wanting a premium cuz there's a chance that could happen again. And so our strategy that's been helping us is to just wait as long as we can before locking in the wintertime supply. Because the risk that we're trying to avoid is that those spikes are gonna happen. And in order for those spikes to happen, it's gotta get really cold or a pipeline's gotta blow up someplace. Which is what happened back when the winter went crazy. But we don't know that's not going to happen. And the gas enterprise can't afford the risk cuz the fund balance is low at this point. So I thought this was interesting, when I do these presentations, I work from the previous slides. So this is a slide from last year. This was actually in December when I did it. But when I, oh, as of October thirty-first, it was October thirty-first. We were looking at six-dollar gas for twenty-five, twenty-six, and we just bought the gas for five twelve. Because as we're getting closer to the winter and there hasn't been an explosion or it hasn't been cold, prices come down. So we did well. So this is what it looks like now. Uh, you can see the gas from last winter at five fifty-three. The gas that we just bought, taking us up above eighty percent at five twelve. But we haven't bought gas yet for twenty-six, twenty-seven cuz it still looks a little expensive. So that technically is a deviation from the purchase policy. And the purchase policy says that when we report to you, we're telling you where we're deviating. So the objective of the gas purchase policy is being demonstrated, we're protecting residents from gas volatility and we're buying opportu- opportunistically. However, the three-year averaging is 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 restrictive. So there's two things I'm thinking about, one is change the gas purchase policy. Or two is just keep reporting to you that we're not doing it exactly like it says. We could go either way. And open to your opinion on that. Because of the hangover from that high-priced winter, that's causing this ongoing um premium price for futures gas. When the hangover goes away and it's easing off, then three-year purchases might be just fine to do that kind of averaging, but not yet. So having said that, maybe just leave it alone and continue to report to you. But true dollar-cost averaging would suggest that you buy in thirds, three years out, which is what the policy says. This is a look back and a little bit of a look forward at how much the wholesale gas costs. So you can see that peaking year, winter twenty-two, twenty-three, we spent over two million dollars for wholesale supply. And then it came down. And now we can see, hmm, it's kind of leveling out. So the price for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, twenty-seven is adjusted upward a little bit for inflation. But volatility in the market could easily outweigh simple inflation. But this is important because we're, as we're looking at setting rates, we're going to avoid the spike by our purchases ahead, but how much farther down can it come? Not too much. What would I expect? Well, we bought gas at five twelve, what's the lowest it could be? Maybe four fifty? So the downward opportunity is much less than the upward risk. But again, this is important cuz we're talking about rate setting. So if we're looking for much more relief from wholesale purchases, there's not much left there. I also wanted to touch on capital needs. I'll show you, I'm gonna show you revenue expense table in a moment. But over many years, really not that much money has been sent, spent on the gas system, mostly for meters. But not for pipes or valves. It doesn't have as many moving parts as the water system, obviously, there's no pumps and no treatment plant. But the system needs attention now. And the immediate attention it needs is two of thirteen anode beds that protect the steel system need to be replaced, they've stopped working. And they protect the steel pipelines in the older part of the city from deteriorating. So that request for proposals is getting formulated, that needs to go out. Should be about a hundred thousand, not, hopefully not over a hundred thousand each. They have to bore deep down into the ground, a hundred and sixty feet and put these um sacrificial anodes down there in a certain careful way and then connect them back into the the rectifiers that are above ground. Replacing gas meters has been ongoing. But now there is a need to replace distribution system valves in the steel system again. Because they are seized up and they can't close them. So that needs to start happening in this fiscal year, it's in the budget. But that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's added on to expenses for fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. And then for each of the next five years, probably two hundred thousand a year to keep replacing the anode beds. They, the good news is they've extended their life, extended fifty years. They should have already been exhausted because they deteriorate over time. But they check them every year and they've been performing, except finally, two of them has have failed. So last year, we got away without a recommended rate increase. What I'm going to explain to you now is the recommendation, recommendation for a twenty percent rate increase November first, so for this winter. This is a good visual visual visualization of where costs have been, looking back over many years. And so it's divided into three main categories. The bottom category is all the city cost, labor materials. The middle category is PG&E transportation, and then on top is the commodity cost. And what you see going from the left side is PG&E transportation costs going upward from thirty-three cents per therm all the way up to fifty-four cents projected for fiscal twenty-eight. It's around fifty cents right now. So where gas costs have gone up and come down on the top, PG&E costs have come up underneath that to hold the overall cost per unit up. The dash line is representing the rates that are collected. And what I'm showing you here is that without the increase, we are collecting less money than the unit cost for city plus PG&E plus commodity. You also see, when you look at fiscal twenty-four, you see that, actually fiscal twenty-three, um, gas had eighty-four cents of the cost. But in that year, PG&E was only thirty-one cents, so we didn't see the overall impact of the expensive gas that was bought during that cold winter because PG&E was still lower. The other thing that happened during that cold winter is sales were so high that it it made up for the additional cost of the gas. So from last year's presentation, again, this was the slide that I showed you that justified no rate increase. So what you see is um in the middle of the slide on the right, forty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one, the projection was that we would be just above break-even at the end of the year. And we weren't too far off. So now this is the projection, and you see the actual number for fiscal twenty-five was ninety-one thousand negative. And I know it's a negative number, but on a percentage basis, the difference between the slight positive and ninety-one negative is really not that much. This slide is showing you what would happen if there wasn't an increase. And so I'm projecting the current level of revenue forward. And um before I get down to the operating income line, I want to point, point out an ongoing issue that staff is aware of. The cost for all three enterprises for, whether it's refuse or sewer or water or gas for enterprises for use of credit cards has gotten very expensive for the city. It's currently eleven percent, which is astronomical, and they are working on it to fix it. The reason I even know is because I was asking why certain cost category had gone up so much. But you can see for fiscal twenty-five, there's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of credit card and online pay fees, merchant fees assigned to natural gas alone. So that's gonna get fixed because staff is working on it. And I projected forward a more reasonable number, seventy-five thousand in the next three years. But what I'm showing here is without a rate increase, the operating income for the uh next couple of years is negative and more negative. For fiscal twenty-six, it would be a hundred and forty-two thousand. For fiscal twenty-seven, four hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's operating income, but on the very bottom, I'm showing the fund balance. The fund balance is already low. On an unaudited basis, the fund balance as of as of June thirtieth was about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So without a rate increase, it would go negative to minus three hundred thousand at the end of twenty-six and almost minus a million at the end of twenty-seven. But the main focus here is fiscal twenty-six to keep the enterprise fund in the black, the fund balance in the black um at the end of the fiscal year. Here it is again with a twenty percent increase beginning November first. You can see that the operating income becomes positive actually in both years for fiscal twenty-six and fiscal twenty-seven. And we keep the fund balance just positive even at the end of fiscal twenty-seven. Let's look at the impact this has on a typical resident. Typical resident in Colinga uses three hundred and sixty thermes per year, most of it's in the winter, which everyone knows. That's what the profile looks like. Ten to fifteen thermes in the summer, which is for water heating and clothes drying and cooking. That's all there is cuz you're sure not heating in the summertime here. And then, and then winter heating during the cooler months. So three hundred and sixty thermes. And so I'm doing a number of things on this slide. I'm showing the comparison over the past twelve months to what a Colinga resident would have paid if they were a PG&E customer. But I'm also showing the impact on their own cost. So if we look at that first on the right, the gas cost is um a hundred and sixty-six of what they pay over twelve months. Transportation to Colinga is three hundred and three. And if you add the twenty percent, it's another ninety-four for a total of five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Even with the increase, Colinga rates based on the last twelve months would be thirty-eight percent less than PG&E. Without the increase, it's almost half. It's so much lower. And really, when I went to do this slide a couple of days ago, I didn't really know what I was gonna get. But when I started to see it, I wanted to know why. And I want to point out, point out to you that it's not the gas cost itself, and you can see that on the bottom. Our gas cost the last six months, last twelve months, for typical customers, one sixty-six, one sixty-six. Well, if you were on PG&E, it would have been less, it would have been one fifty-two. And the reason Colinga's gas cost is a little bit more is because we bought gas ahead of time. And then winter prices fell. Because the utilities, the big utilities, reset their gas prices every month. If you're a PG&E customer, you see that on the bottom of your bill, it tells you the commodity portion of your bill. We don't do it that way here. We, in this case, now with the gas purchase strategy, we're buying gas ahead of time, so we know what our cost is gonna be. But the main point is that the difference isn't gas cost, the difference is the transportation fee. And everything that covers for PG&E. It's huge. And then a little bit for the public purpose program, which which finances low-income customers. So again, even with twenty percent increase, still thirty-eight percent less than PG&E based on the last twelve months. The gas system, as I've said before, is a tremendous asset to the city. It's just time that it needs a little bit more attention as far as the capital requirements are concerned. This is what the rates would look like, I'm showing the twenty percent increase. By the way, obviously, this, tonight is not a night to decide on the rate increase, there's no resolution that's been prepared. So this needs to come back if you're willing to support it. Unlike water and sewer and refuse, it is exempt from Proposition two eighteen, so we do not have to do the rate notices. But this is just informational tonight. Which is what I just said on that slide. I'm open to questions. I know it's never good to hear about increases. But we're managing the gas system.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Might be quick, we'll see. Okay, on the operating expenses, it's showing here, you can't see some of it because it's got a crap on there. But it shows the average per year was, uh, each year that's gone up sixty thousand. And from twenty-four to fiscal twenty-five, it went up two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Why did it jump from sixty to almost three hundred thousand?
I wanted to get back to your slide, but for some reason, Robert, did you turn me off? Oh, there we go. Which one are you looking at?
Last year's presentation.
Oh. From last year's presentation?
Yep. So it shows 740, 667 in '22. '23, it shows 799, 678, which is roughly 60,000. The next year is another 60,000, just a little over. But the '25, it jumps 286,953. Why was that such a big jump?
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to get to the same place.
The PG&E transportation part.
Oh.
That's what I'm looking at, where the parts you have circled. It's showing that it, it went up fiscal year '25 to 286,000, well, 287,000 from 60,000. Do you know what the reason was for that, or can you at least look into it for us?
Well, first of all, since PG&E rates have been going up, every single month, I check the actual PG&E charges against the model. So I know it's right, which is not necess-- well, I guess that's good news. But the bad news is why, and why are PG&E... One big factor that happened that you can see, let me go to another slide that shows it. This one. You see PG&E rates going from 38 to 49, which is before what you're looking at. PG&E determined in that period that the city of Colinga was not exempt from the Air Resources Board surcharge, which was a significant cost. It was the main difference moving from the 31 to the 49. And it happened, it happens sometime during that year, so in that middle year, it got blurred. But beside the fact that PG&E rates were going up anyway, the PG&E began to assess the city for the Air Resources Board surcharge. And there was, we couldn't argue against that.
Now, is there, is there projections that it's going to go up even more as they start enforcing everybody to go electric? Because they've already, Sacramento's already pushing to make California electric, electric appliances, everything.
I know, natural gas used to be the clean alternative, and now it's a greenhouse gas. And I like gas, obviously. It's what, it's where I started. But it is a greenhouse gas. So in my projections, I, I'm escalating the PG&E cost 5% this year and 5% next year. Is it going to be more than that? I don't know.
So I have a question. You were talking about an 11% credit card fee?
Yeah.
What's up with that?
Mike, do you want to... I know you're working on that, and I know you hate it that I brought it up.
I mean, I'm serious, like, hold on. Does that mean that every transaction, we're paying 11%? How? I mean, any business can get between 1 and 3. I can do PayPal for 3. How is the city paying 11? And how much of an impact did that create on this deficit that we're looking at?
To answer you, Mayor, that's one of my monthly project status report. It is for credit card payments for all services. Today, we only have it for utility billing and not other services such as permit, et cetera. So we're trying to incorporate those in there. But as far as the 11% go, it's like a, what it is, is that our merchant company who is OpenEdge, they are the one who collects the funds that are being paid to the city. And for every transaction that we receive here, they put a service fee on it, just like you would get it if you were to go to like a restaurant that may charge you like a service fee for, for using a credit card. So there's that. Plus, there is a dollar amount for every transaction. So there's a percentage of how much you pay, and then a charge for using the, the transaction. So at a point in time, gosh, I can't remember what the year was, but the city had decided to go ahead and absorb the cost. So these are costs that, that can be passed on to the customer, but the city decided to take on that fee and pay for those services. So we not only pay for those services through the merchant, we also pay a fee with our current ERP system, who is Tyler Technologies, to also pay a fee for every transaction that we received. And, and so with that, I've also learned through a conference that I attended that with government and also with utilities, we should be paying at a lower rate. And that's where I've learned that we're not. And so I have reached out to our merchant processor, who is OpenEdge, and had some discussion with them on that. And we're also looking at Tyler Technologies because they can also do that. But at one point in time, we decided to go with a third party who's OpenEdge. So now we are looking at the both of them, and we're looking to see which one would give us a better rate.
So I remember when we did this. I was in favor at the time of absorbing the rates because we were told it was going to be in between 1 and 3%. And now it's coming out at 11?
It's coming out very high.
That's, that's just thievery. I mean, I can pay the DMV for $3.95 for almost any amount that I want.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, wow. So what's the timeline on stopping that practice? I mean, I mean, I thought that should be stopped immediately. We shouldn't be paying 11%. No way in heck. I mean, and I know this isn't your fault, so I, excuse my frustration. But when we're looking at this right here, and just to piggyback onto this, from 2018 to 2022, we raised natural gas rates 96%. 96%. And I vowed that I was never going to vote in my four years of being here that we, that 96 should cover us. And so you aren't going to see me voting for any natural gas increases. I may be the lone vote, but there's no way. Not a chance. 96% is a lot to go through in four years. And, but I'm looking at this, and I'm saying to myself, how much, how much of this is caused by that 11%?
Well, it's, I, it's $100,000 of 4 million. Now I got to look that I've said that. Robert, I'm trying to move. Oh, there we go. Of, so I'm looking at... So if we subtract $100,000 from about $3 million, so it's 100,000 over 3 million.
And so how much does that make a difference on our deficits moving forward? Like if we make changes, does that change the scenario? Or did you take that into consideration already when you, when you did that?
Well, I took it into consideration already. She's going to fix the problem. And it's going to go from 174,000 to 75,000. Is this a pointer?
And is that including, let's just ask this ahead of time. Does that include the fixes having, now having the people pay the fee?
No, it doesn't.
No, it does not.
No.
By the way, I'll say this the way I'm supposed to. City Council may want to consider imposing a service fee to customers who choose to use their credit cards.
If we did that, what would the scenario be? Can you give us a...
Well, if the, you know, we talked about that a little bit. I'm not supposed to say I recommend it. But a lot of places where you use your credit cards do that. And so if a customer's bill is...
We did that, would that be a different thing than, you know, than raising rates 20%? I mean, for convenience, for someone to come in and pay with their credit card. See, when we, when we agreed to do this, we really thought it was going to be between 1 and 3% because that's what we were, that's what we were discussing, I remember, because I was pushing this forward at the time, what, eight, nine years ago? So, but would that make a difference on this if we did start recuperating those costs?
I, I believe it will make a difference because this is a cost that should be passed on to the customer if recommended and approved, then that would go down to zero because the city will not be paying for that service.
Okay. And then my other question is, what are we talking about when you're saying public programs?
It's 3% of the 20%. It's 3% of the 20%. So 20% would be 17%. You know, it's something. But I've assumed it's...
Take 11% out because we wouldn't be paying for that. We'd be shifting the costs over to the, over to the people at whatever they would pay. So wouldn't that 11% come out? Because no longer would we be paying that?
Well, I need to be careful because I already assume they fixed the problem.
Oh, you're already, you're already fixing the problem. Okay, my, okay.
But you still have a point, Mayor, and that is if you, if customers paid the burden, if the remaining customers paid the burden, then it would be that much better. The, the remaining $75, 75,000 would go to zero. So that's, you know, 2%.
And when you're talking about the public programs, let's go back to that. When you're saying that was a PG&E thing, is that something that they're also pushing on to us?
No.
No.
If, for me, as a PG&E customer, I pay that public purpose program surcharge as a line item.
The very last question I have is, you had stated that one of the reasons we're in this is that we bought and then prices fell.
We...
You said we bought for the winter, but then prices fell. And you said that that's one of the reasons that we're in this boat.
Well, yeah, we, in '24,
Okay.
we bought the gas at 553 because our purchase policy says we're going to go into winter 80% hedge because we can't be exposed to market risk. And then prices fell as we went through the winter, not too much. And so for this winter, we bought the gas at 512. So to the extent monthly gas, as we move through the winter, the remaining 20% that we need costs less, then we save a little money.
So are other places doing this as well, as other cities doing this kind of purchase plan deal?
Well, the ones that I serve.
And we appreciate that, but I'm just wondering if that might be contributing to the factor of the prices staying high too? Because if you have a bunch of places that are all doing the same thing because they're, they're trying to hedge themselves against a disaster that may or may not come, then that can artificially keep prices high.
Well, where that's happening is that sellers are looking back at what could happen in such a volatile winter and holding out, saying if you want, if you want price security, you're going to pay a little bit more for it.
All right. Well, I appreciate all of your, I know that you're doing your best to help us. And so my frustration is not towards you. It's just towards this whole thing of we're being, looking at this at a 20% increase as in the last, you know, from 2018, 2022, we did a 96% increase. And so it's just frustrating. So I appreciate all the information you have. Anyone else from council?
So I appreciate all the information, and we got to look at the end numbers. We're still 38% below if we were buying from PG&E. If we were hooked up to PG&E, we're still 38% below what, what we would be paying them. So we're doing a good job for our citizens. The city's a business, and we have a symbiotic relationship with our citizens. They're part of our business. We work together to make it cheaper to live in Colinga. That's what this is all about. A lot of communities don't do this because of that. And our infrastructure is failing, and we do need to fix it. If we don't, I have a question. Has anybody ever done a, an outlook on what a major gas leak would cost the city? Which in turn would get passed on to the citizens if we had a major distribution line fail because of the anto beds going bad. What would that end up costing the city? Have you looked into that?
We haven't done an exact analysis, but I know, being a low-pressure system, even on a larger leak, we would be able to control it relatively quick, and we probably wouldn't lose that much gas. Because we're not on the high-pressure side, since we're on a distribution, on our, just on the distribution system with the valves in the system, we've had gas leaks, obviously. And so it's not significant. I mean, I don't think we've seen noticeable amounts of gas being utilized during a leak.
But you still have all the equipment that goes out and responds. What the cost, like, if we had a big leak, the, the total cost, would it be $100,000 on a, on a leak to go out and respond?
It's hard to tell with the personnel, equipment, it can get expensive, yes.
Yeah, so, so we're protecting our customers by doing the maintenance, by asking for the, for the money and, and getting the anto beds fixed. It's a, it's a must. We have to do it. We, we need to do maintenance on all of our aging infrastructure. I know the state sometimes puts money out to infrastructure upgrades. And they decided this year that they weren't going to fund a lot of communities. They were going to fund the state hospital with $34.8 million in infrastructure upgrades. And that didn't go to us or any other small community with failing infrastructure. We're, we're over 100 years old, 120 years old next year, Colinga. So our infrastructure is needing massive repairs. So we need to look forward to, in the future, to repair all this stuff before we do have failures and we can't supply gas to our customers. Just a few, a few things.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of frustrated that I remember sitting in this and we were $2 million ahead, and we were dropping rates because we were trying to spend down a healthy fund balance. And I was asking questions at the time of, that's interesting. You know, and why didn't we replace any of this stuff out when we had a healthy fund balance? And we had $2 million. I didn't bring this up earlier because it just seems like spilled milk. But this is the scenario we were in 10 years ago. We had a $2 million healthy fund balance, and we were spending it down by lowering rates. And now we're in this boat to where we do not have a healthy fund balance. And now we have these repairs that need to be done, and it's frustrating. So I hear what you're saying, and I agree. We need to make sure that we keep up with that. Maybe we should ask for some grants or work with our Townsend or someone like that to try and see if we can't get the state to come through and, you know, we won't hold our breath. But you made great points, and we should try and reach out and try and get some of this money that, you know, is being passed around. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? No? I appreciate it. Thanks, Dan. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Always good hearing from you. Well, not always good news, but it's always good that you present it in such a great way. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right, and we appreciate you guys sticking with us. I know this probably didn't seem like it was going to be a long agenda. My goodness. So we already did, uh, citizens' comments. Right, so we're going to, number four, public hearings, we have none. Going to move on to the consent calendar where we have 12 items where we merged agendas. 1 through, 5.1 through 12. Is there anything that council would like to pull?
Yeah, I do. Just for some information, 5.2 and 5.9.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll go do 5.2 first.
You want to do it, Mike? Or I can do it. You just want some, you want the information? Sure.
I'm sorry. Information on, you want me to just go over the chart?
The cannabis, the cannabis tax, all the money coming in? And if we're receiving all of what we're supposed to be getting specifically?
Let's see. So for fiscal year '24, '25, this is ending March 31st, 2025. We've collected 391,948. It is... We are receiving about 40% more than what we expected when we budgeted. And that, and when we prepare the budget for that fiscal year, it was under the assumption that Clermont was not going to be in business. And I believe somewhere along there, we, in that fiscal year, we had a contract with them for, to catch up on their payments. And so because of that, they are on a payment plan with us. And we do have some things that we do need to work out with them. I don't have current information about them today, but we can provide that as needed as well. I don't have current information about them today, but we can provide that as needed as well. But as budget-wise, we were forty percent more. We received forty percent more than we expected at that point in time. And as for today, I don't have a number of the cannabis agencies that are out there.
There's four. We have four that are currently paying. Clermont Custody Center is closed. And so we, for the four operators that we have, it's basically three entities, but four operators, because there's two locations for the location out at Mercantile, and they have one on West Elm. But out of the four merchants, we're current with all of them. We've been working with them the last six months to get them up to speed. But everybody's current, so that's where we are seeing an increase in the revenue, because folks are paying. But yeah, Clermont is closed. So it's just the four entities that are currently operational, and we're staying on top of making sure they're paying on time. And we provided leeway in the past, but that leeway has gone away.
That's what I was wanting to know. Appreciate that.
Excellent. And we're going to move on to five dot nine.
I just wanted to hear what the big plan was to rehabilitate the gazebo. I know we had some people out there that get to talk.
Good evening.
I appreciate you coming back.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Janine Wagner, and this is my husband, Chad. And we are here representing Community Scholarship Alliance tonight with the Gazebo Upgrade Project, are renovating the gazebo. We are excited to be in partnership with the Lions. So Annette Harrington's here representing the Lions, and then Linda and Tito Balling, representing the Colinga Revitalization Group. We've nicknamed them. So CSA adopted the gazebo last year through the Adopt a Spot program. And we've had some interest with the other groups wanting to partner with doing an upgrade. And we are hoping that the city will help us out with the ADA compliance part. You guys have more resources as far as engineers and knowing the laws. And since it is a public park, we would have to follow, obviously, all the rules. So we're hoping to be in partnership with our community partners as well as the city.
Excellent.
And we've created a, well, my mom, Linda, created a great mock-up that we are hoping, if you want to pass that around, just as an idea of what it could look like. And so far, we're not thinking there's too much as far as structure that needs to change. We've had some help from the city already go out and look to make sure that footings are still okay, and there's some changes that need to, to be made there, but structurally, it's still in pretty good shape. And of course, we'd keep those wonderful Lions. The Lions will be rehabbing those.
That looks nice. Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, on some of this, on some of this work, are you asking or reaching out to local businesses to see if they would be willing to donate?
Yeah, yeah. We'll be requesting donations if we get approval from the city. And, and then depending on when we go through and do our costs or estimations, well, that's what we'll share with our potential donors, what our, our goal will be. I know a lot of community members, community businesses are interested in supporting the project already. And then we're looking at like a tiered donation, like maybe have tiles or a plaque of some, some sort to honor the, those donors. And we've been in contact with Mrs. Frame, is it Roberta? Yeah, and she's excited that this will be rehabbed as well in her husband's name.
So is this something that you would be asking community volunteers or people to help out and that type of thing?
Yeah, I think so. We'll, we'll put it out there for, you know, if someone wants to grab a paintbrush, or, you know, we'll keep the structural stuff to the professionals. You don't want me trying to build.
Excellent. Well, I, I think as a council, we very much appreciate your efforts and your wanting to, to, you know, to do this type of work, and we appreciate it, and I think that's amazing. That's really, that's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything to make the community better, we like.
All right. Can I entertain a motion for the consent calendars, item one through twelve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the additional ten, eleven, and twelve.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent calendar passes. We've already done the ordinance presentation, discussion, potential action items. We did number one, and then we pulled number two, which means we're going to move on to announcements.
I have none, Mayor.
City managers' announcements, none? Okay. City council members' announcements, reports?
I just got a question. Maybe the city manager can help me with. How's the airshow coming?
It's coming along really well. We've, we've been getting a lot of interest on sponsors. We, we're kind of putting together all the logistics. We've got a performance schedule that we just talked with our air boss yesterday. We met out at the airport with them. And so we're starting to see, you know, sponsorships come in. The schedule, we're looking at probably an hour and a half to almost two-hour airshow, kind of spread out, so people have time, have breaks. But we've got a good lineup. We're still waiting on a few other confirmations. But we're looking, it's looking to be an exciting event. We're getting a lot of interest from vendors. A lot of pilots are showing interest. I think there's some information being put out on some message boards at a lot of local airports or regional airports. And I have an interview with the news, ABC Thirty, in about a week and a half, and also talked to a couple of radio stations that have shown some interest in the event as well. So trying to get the word out. Hopefully, you'll see more. Tickets are on sale. We will be... I'm working with Scott over at the Chamber on getting tickets available, so we can actually sell tickets locally, too, because some people may not want to use Eventbrite, but they can also get online. But they can, will hopefully, once we get some, our local sponsors solidified, we'll hopefully have some locations in town that folks can purchase tickets as well. But yeah, we'll start putting out more details as it goes, but we're ready, we're moving and rocking and rolling on getting things together.
Awesome. Thanks.
And what, what, what day in time is that going to be on?
It's September twenty-seventh. This is Saturday from ten to two.
Ten to two. All right. Any other council members' reports? Mayor's announcements, I have none. Future gen items? None? Okay. We're going to move into closed session, where it looks like we have seven items. Do we have any thought that we might be reporting out?
No, I think, and do we only have six now?
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled the one.
Oh, that's right.
We pulled nine points, nine-point-seven.
Oh, we did?
Eight-point-seven. Is it eight-point-seven?
It's nine. There's no eight.
That's why I didn't have it marked.
Oh, nine-point-seven. That was my fault.
Okay.
Pulling closed session, item nine-point-seven.
Okay, so we have items one, nine-point-one through six. And a meeting is adjourned. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming.